All right, calling to order the August 18th, 2020, meeting of the North End of the Planning Board. This is Chair Aton Goldberg. I'm going to read a statement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North End of the Planning Board is being conducted by remote participation. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Reminder, the persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so or may watch on television. You can visit www.northandovercan.org. I believe we're also on channel 8 or 22, depending on if it was live or in a contest. It also might be 26, so check that out. You can email questions to geneenright@j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov or comments and they will be addressed during the meeting. Gene, want to call roll, please?
Sure. Aton Goldberg?
Present.
John Simons?
I'm here.
Peter Boynton?
Here.
Kate Bargnese?
Present.
Kelly Comier?
Present.
And Erin Preston emailed just before the meeting, Aton, if you did not receive it, that he is not able to make the meeting.
I saw that. Thank you. Okay, let's jump right in. Doesn't look like too heavy of an agenda today. So let's start with. Gina, it's our staff report on there. I hope everyone's had the time to read that. We'll just go into those items as we hit each of the topics, okay? Bond release, 45 Woodbury Lane, Lisa Torbin Shaw requests a lease of a $4,000 performance bond associated with a watershed special permit granted May 21st, 2019. Seema Shaw is with us. Gene, can you tell us about this bond release, please?
Yep, so the applicant posted a $4,000 bond associated with an addition to her property. The engineer has submitted an ASBIL plan. On that ASBIL plan, he has certified that the buildout has been substantially in compliance with the plan. The, there was somewhat of an outstanding issue in terms of the recorded deed restriction to limit the use of fertilizer as well as coal tar-based pavement sealer. The applicant has since recorded that decision and I do have a copy of it on file. And so I am in support of the bond release.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Could we get a motion to approve the bond release of remaining bond funds for 45 Woodbury Lane?
This is Kate. I'll make the motion.
We've got a motion by Kate. John, you want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, do a roll call. Vote, John?
John votes yes.
Aton, I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
All right, that is approved.
All right. Lisa, just so you're aware, we submit that to the treasurer's office. We have two check runs a month, so depending on the timing of when we submit it to a check run, it could take a few weeks. So if you don't receive anything within a month or so, please contact us, but it could take up to that long. Excellent. Thank you for your help, Gene. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. All right, continued public hearing, 1160 Great Pond Road, Brooks School. Application for a watershed protection district special permit, site plan review special permit under chapter 195, article 4, point, part 5, section 195-8 and 195-10.7, the town of North Andover zoning bylaw to authorize the phased redevelopment and reconstruction of certain existing developed areas of the property, including renovation of the south entrance, removal and reconstruction of buildings, accessways and landscape areas, improvements in installation and new drainage improvements and associated landscaping. The majority of the proposed work is within the general zone with a small portion of reconstruction of walks, parking, landscaping on the outer edge of the non-disturbance and non-discharge zones. The project was located in the R1 zone. Since this is a public hearing, I'm also going to read a statement regarding public hearings. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This continued public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board is being conducted by our participation. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted. If the public can listen or view this meeting while in progress can watch on northandovercan.org and watch on television and can also participate through emailing questions to our planning director, geneenright@j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. Okay.
Gene, this is Kate. I have to recuse myself.
All right, Kate, you're accusing yourself on this matter. Thank you, Kate. So Kelly, you're going to participate in this, okay? Just in case we need your vote later on. Gene, can you, one, tell us if there has been any public comment so far submitted and then, two, give us a rundown of where we stand on this continued public hearing?
Okay, there hasn't been no public comment submitted at this point.
Thank you.
So this hearing actually opened on April 14th. That was the first public hearing you had since we began remote operations. The hearing was opened with no comment, no public evidence heard, and so it's since been continued up until today's date. There's a significant amount of information in your packet. However, the applicants have provided a overview in terms of a presentation that they'd like to walk you through today. A small portion of the project is within the limits of conservation, and so they have also filed an NOI with the Conservation Commission and will be heard at their next meeting. I will just suggest that, obviously, it's been a long time. There's no requirement to renotice. We've had no public hearing when we initially noticed this whatsoever. But if you feel that it may be warranted to just kneel a butters and notice again, not necessarily put it in the paper. We can, we can do that for the next hearing. Obviously, you're not going to close tonight. The Conservation Commission, my understanding, did send a butted notification again for their hearing. In addition, we did have, way back in early spring, a technical review committee. There were several comments submitted by both police and fire, and the applicants are circling back with them. Again, in your packet, a response to those technical review committee comments. But the applicants have scheduled a site walk with the police department and have had follow-up conversation with the fire department. I have asked the applicants to state the center line of the relocated southern entrance on the property, and I would suggest you talk to the applicants about possibly a site visit for yourselves as well as the police department, just to get orientated in terms of where that driveway is located and then where it matches back up with the former southern driveway. Stormwater review has begun several months ago. Our peer reviewer has submitted their first round of comments. The applicants have prepared to respond to, well, actually, they did just recently send a response just the other day. So that's well on its way, and department review comments have been submitted by fire, DPW, and police, and the applicants will respond to those as well.
Okay, great. So why don't we hear from the applicants?
Do we know if Brian Vaughn has joined the call?
Andrew, I've not seen him join, but in Brian's absence, why don't I interject about the common driveway special permit?
Okay.
Brian and I did have some discussion today regarding that.
So for the board.
Gene, I'm sorry. This is Brian. I'm sorry. I was muted. I was trying to unmute myself. I apologize.
Okay.
But I am here. If you want to continue, though.
Okay, yeah, I did want to just cover that, again, at a high level, that, that special permit for the common driveway. It just occurred to me this weekend. And I think kind of what hindered my awareness of this is Brooks owns both of these parcels, so I've listed it on the gender as 1116 and if I remember right, 1016, Great Pond Road, 1160 and 1116. So the southern driveway is moving to the 1116 existing driveway. So technically, it's a common driveway serving two parcels. However, the purpose of a common driveway is really to get an easement document as well as a maintenance agreement to perform maintenance over two different ownerships. I would suggest, and I had this conversation with Brian, I think it's necessary to file for that common driveway special permit. However, the condition could likely be something to the effect of if these were ever to change ownership, then an easement document and a maintenance agreement needs to be in place, but given the fact that they're in the same ownership, that document is not necessarily per se at this time. And Brian can expand upon that if he'd like. He sent an email today, once I alerted him of the common driveway, and we were both of the same thought that it could be handled in that manner.
Exactly. I mean, my, my suggestion would be that we could, you know, waive the, the, the condition for there to be an easement or an covenant, but include a condition in the, in the, in the decision that would specify if, if ownership were ever segregated into two separate owners, or even if you felt more comfortable, if it was ever conveyed out of ownership of of Brooks School, that at, at that point in time, we would have a an easement and covenant that would be subject to the planning board's, you know, prior approval as to form and record it then. But again, that's with respect to relief, which technically hasn't yet even been requested. It would be a common driveway special permit that we would intend to be submitting before the September 3rd deadline to have it noticed and, and, and heard and then have simultaneous decisions issued for all of the relief being requested, which would be the watershed special permit, the site plan review special permit, as well as then the common driveway special permit.
So I think we're going to get an overview of what the project is and what we're going to be looking at?
Yep, and, and we can move on to, to that now, and I, and I guess, you know, with respect to whether or not you would require actually an easement and covenants, that can be dealt with at a subsequent meeting anyway. That's, this is really was just by way of, of overview. So moving on, I guess, the, the more substantive, I, I with me on the call tonight for the project team is Andrew Leonard from AT Leonard and Associates, as well as, I believe, Anthony Cleaves from Whitman and Bingham.
What do you have to say to my house? Because I must have said something that Caroline overheard.
Hello?
Yeah, continue, please.
Okay, I was getting a lot of feedback there. I'm not sure what that was, but. And I believe also we have Paul Griffin from, from Brooks School on with us. I anticipate he's on. I know he had an earlier meeting and he thought he may be a little bit late, but at this point, I assume he's on. I'll just give you, I think Gene did a very good job at giving you an introduction. I'll give you maybe a little bit more of an introduction. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Leonard to actually walk us, walk us through on an overview level what, what this, the school is looking to do. I think one of the most important things that, you know, we should, we should look at tonight is if, in fact, you're looking to have a site visit or want to get on campus to see it, we should arrange that and coordinate that tonight. Because the with the upcoming, with, with school coming back for purposes of COVID, there's going to be significant campus security and they really want to try to get any, any on-campus visit coordinated and taken care of in advance of when students come back to school. As far as the, the project itself is concerned, I, I think it's, it's a series of different things. The first is relocating the existing southern access or entrance, which is currently in the area of the tennis courts up towards where the existing 1116 driveway is. Installing a new southern entrance at that point and interconnecting it to the rest of the campus. And then there's a, a series of subsequent internal modifications, which really address campus access, pedestrian access, as well as some building modifications. The relief we've requested, we've already walked through, just the site, site plan review special permit, watershed special permit. We will also be filing, as we've mentioned, for the common driveway special permit, and we filed with Conservation Commission. Yeah, procedurally, we did submit in March. If the, if the board would like us to, to renotice, we, we'd be happy to do that, particularly in as much as we'll be noticing again for the, the driveway special permit in any event. We'll leave that to you and we'll take your lead on that. Since we filed in March, there have been some, some modifications to the plan. We submitted a supplemental filing just recently before this, which, which was really an entire new plan set. Without further ado, I guess I'd turn it over to Andrew at this point to walk us through his slides and, and the details of the project.
Good evening. Andrew Leonard, AT Leonard Associates, master planner and landscape architect. Been working with Brooks for a number of years through the chapel project and the arts project. And what I was hoping to do for you guys tonight was kind of distill that, that 50-page drawing set into more visual images and scope descriptions. So you have a feel for what the, the work might entail. So do, do you have the, the presentation PDF available to you?
Yes.
Great. What, what I'll do is I'll kind of go page by page and just tell you what page I'm on and describe what's going on and that this document is a series of fore and after perspective images, which we thought might help the conversation as, as we go. So I'm on page two, and I just wanted to introduce, Brian did a nice job introducing the team. Just want to give you some background as to kind of the impetus behind some of these projects. There's a push within Brooks to improve the safety and security of the campus, both on the main walkways as well as the, the perimeter access. There's been some issues and securing the campus is a significant priority. While working on that, we want to make sure we're improving the admission and visitor experience and the student experience while that's going on. It, it also involves, which is a principle of the school, is to try and remove and replace some dated structures and reducing building footprint where possible. Obviously, because of its relationship to the lake and just good practice. Modernizing some infrastructure, and I think another important part that is the visual connection to the land and the lake. Brooks really is, is proud of their campus, is, is proud of the connection to the lake and wants to celebrate that more than the current campus does. On page three, we provided an aerial photograph of the campus. This is a recent flyover, so it gives you a feel of the, kind of a Google view. More recent than Google's latest update. For orientation, Great Pond Road is on the top of the page and the lake is on the bottom of the page. The very large building, kind of middle left towards the top, is the athletic center and rink. If you're familiar with campus, it gives you an idea where that is. And we'll be talking mostly to the right of that, that rink structure toward 1116, which is on the right-hand side of the page. It's the residence on the right-hand side, kind of to the right of the row. You kind of see a visual row of trees with fields on both sides. 1116 is that, is that large structure that's to the right of that row of trees. And as I go along, if I lose you or from somewhere that you need more information, please just interrupt me and, and, and let me know what you need. On page four, this starts to give you a feel for the areas of campus we're going to work in, in relationship to the boundaries. So again, the same orientation with Great Pond Road on the top of the page, the lake is on the bottom. The, the thick blue dash line that goes kind of through the middle of campus is the watershed boundary, approximately the watershed boundary. We don't intend for this boundary to move or to do anything to the boundary, but it, you know, this just shows you where it is on campus. The purple line is the edge of the non-discharge zone, so anything between the, kind of the purple dash line and the blue dash line is the general zone. And then between the purple line and the yellow lines are the, between the non-disturbances and the non-discharge. From the yellow to the red or to the lake is the non-disturbance zone, and the red dash lines are wetlands, which also have the, the appropriate buffer zones around it. The rectangles, which you'll see on the top right, is the south entrance. The, there's a lighter purple and some blues kind of in the middle of campus. Those rectangles are where we're really working, and we're going to zoom in on each one of those areas and show you what's going on. But this map, we really wanted to just give you a sense of that, our, our closest work is 1,000 feet from the lake. More often than not, we're well beyond that distance and that just give you a feel for where we were in relationship to, to the boundaries. On page five, we're going to zoom in on the south entrance, so you can see the lake in the background. This is an aerial photograph, drone shot. So we're working in a kind of in the foreground in the left in the next few slides, which will show you what Brian described as the shift of the south entrance. And page six shows you the existing conditions plan as we zoom in on that area. So Great Pond Road is along the top. The highlighted yellow lines are the edge of the non-disturbance zones. The, well, it's a paved surface. It goes straight up and down the page, and the left-hand side is the current south entrance to campus, and there's the big bowl and the tennis courts to, to the left of that. There's two faculty housing units, one currently fed from the existing south entrance, and one has its own driveway to Great Pond Road. And then on the right-hand side is the driveway to 1116. So as we got into the project, from a security standpoint, it became evident we had to widen the existing south entrance and provide some sort of gating, improved gating, improved kind of gatehouse-type structure presence. This is the main visitor entrance, and it is, that will be the main entrance, continue to be the main entrance for off-hours and things like that. And as we got into the design and started looking at things, we actually flagged a wetland that is within the bowl, which is a big stormwater area between the driveway and the left and the tennis courts, which are further off the page to the left. So that put the, any work around this existing driveway really close to a wetland, and the wetland was tributary to the lake. So we were really, we didn't like that. Nobody liked that on, on the team or, or within Brooks. And so we said, what else could we do to improve that, but also improve the overall experience that Brooks is looking for? So where we thought we could go was actually to remove the existing south entrance all the way down to, if you look at, towards the bottom of the page, you'll see kind of a, an upside-down Y. That's where the current driveway splits towards the academic area of campus. And that, so that entire section to the split, we're, would be proposing to remove and would be proposing to come in from the 1116 driveway, which would get almost all the work further away from the wetlands. In fact, all the work further away from the wetlands, further to the perimeter of the non-disturbance zones and non-discharge zones. And also allow us to consolidate driveway entrances along Great Pond Road, so we wouldn't have three entrances along Great Pond Road, would end up with one, which would help security and we think safety along Great Pond Road without so many driveways coming in. On page seven, we tried to color render the proposed plan.
John, this is Peter. Can we pause for a question?
Sure.
Hi, this is Brian speaking. Presentation, is that right?
Andrew.
Andrew, I'm sorry, Andrew. My apologies. This is Andrew. I have a question before you move on to the next slide, if that's okay.
Sure.
I can see on the next slide, it shows the new south entrance, but my question was, the prior slide that shows the existing south entrance and the existing 1116 driveway. That, that presentation has a, a nice representation of the topography curves. I'm using the wrong language here, but it would be very helpful if you could describe where the existing 1116 driveway cuts across towards that inverted Y, the contour lines. Where on that diagram it cuts across? Because I'm curious what the relationship is, the new south connecting 116 to the inverted Y with respect to those contours.
Sure. I can describe that for you. One thing that happens, I'll start with, within Great Pond Road. So at Great, on Great Pond Road, the, we, the road goes uphill as you go from the existing south entrance to the 1116 driveway, and then levels out right at the 1116 driveway, which sort of sits on a high point in the road. So you kind of see down in both directions from a site mine standpoint. As you come in the 1116 driveway and cut across, our proposal is actually to come across the contours versus up and down them. So as you look at the contours from, from a house to the wetland, so you probably can't read it, but it's the Bigelow House, and then there's a wetland below it, would be kind of going between those two on the, very close to the edge of the non-disturbance zone, so.
There's a very fine double dotted line there going from right to left.
Yes, yeah, so it, on the left, on the left-hand side of that line, before it curves back towards the wetland, that is very much like, it's actually an existence cart path that everybody takes, because it's sort of the flat within the land, if you know what I mean. It kind of is the drive. As you, as you see the land, it slopes to one side and slopes to the other, and that kind of follows that flat, that pattern. And then as you get closer to the tree line, a Bigelow house, it comes across through the tree line to the 1116 driveway. So instead of curving towards the wetland, it curves away from the wetland towards Great Pond Road. But it follows that dash line that comes across diagonal that you just described.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a perspective in a couple of slides that shows you what it looks like in that field. We very intentionally are trying to set the drive in the landscape, so we have very little regrading. And we're avoiding the steeper slopes and trying to just fit it right into the landscape. So we're not doing any major, or we're limiting how much earthwork needs to be done to keep the existing landscape as, really as pastoral as possible. Because that's really what, whatever, I think everyone would be looking for, for that.
I don't want to hold us up here any longer, but Aton, I don't know if it's possible to ask for this or not, but this diagram that shows both the existing south entrance and the existing 1116 with the contour lines, to me, it would be very interesting to see the new path superimpose on the two existing driveways. In relation to the contours. I, I don't know if I can ask that or not.
Sure, I mean, I don't know. Andrew, can you tell us what can be done?
It certainly can be done. Obviously not like on the phone call now, but it's very easy to do on the, we can just overlay the two images and provide an image for you that shows them both. We can even leave that little cart road on and show you where that cart road is. And we can, we can show where the existing south entrance is and where it lies in. So that should be, we, that should not be an issue to provide.
Great, yeah, just to think of clarity, what I was asking is, keep the diagram exactly as it is now, but superimpose where the new driveway. but superimpose where the new driveway would go.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Andrew, this is, this is Anthony Cleve from Whitman, I can just jump in for a second. Basically referring to maybe utilizing one of the proposed grading plans that we've already prepared. That shows the proposed new substance, south entrance going across the existing.
Yeah, it'd be L 1.03. It, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't show it over the, the existing, like with the existing driveway showing and all that as clearly as we could, we, we can show it as a diagram and it's not, it's not, it's not hard.
The, the, the ocean control. We don't need, we don't need that now. Why don't we get that for the next meeting? For now, why don't we continue just to go through the slides?
Okay.
And we don't necessarily even have to hit everyone, just kind of want to get an overview and then kind of set up when we'll do the site plan, site, site walk, and then come back and really get into the details at the next meeting.
Okay. Slide seven is just a color rendered plan that shows the proposed driveway. Basically what this is showing is the new drive coming across, tying in at the Y. And that all the other driveways that relate to the, the campus are with, off of this drive. So we would no longer have the driveways going on to Great Pond Road. They'd just be the single driveway where the 1116 entrance is. The next few pages are some perspective views that just give you a feel for what the before and after conditions would be. So page eight shows, existing is in the top right, proposed bottom left of just what, what the former entrance would look like before and after the project. Page nine shows the future entrance, which is the current 1116 entrance on the top right, the proposed entrance bottom left. And then page 10 is the drive. This is actually the view of cutting across the fields that Peter was just mentioning. So you can see how the, the drive would come across the field and would be adding some trees and some lighting. The, as Brian mentioned earlier, we, we included a few slides in this presentation that just shows some of the adjustments from the original submission to the current submission. So this, this slide on page 11 basically just shows how we shifted the gatehouse over, which was a response to some technical access controls kind of aspect. And it moved further from the non-disturbance zone. Page 12 shows that kind of the next cluster of work areas are in the core of campus. So in the, within the green circle, you, you can see a relatively large building. That is the new arts building. So we're sort of working right around the new arts building and along Main Street. Page 13 is the existing conditions plan, which again shows the non, the watershed line. It showed, it highlights the, the kind of peachish salmon color is some buildings. We are, some old buildings would be removing for some new program. Those buildings are a thousand feet from the lake. And we're doing some improvements by the current admission arrival parking lot, which is kind of called out on the top of the screen. So we're going to zoom in on the top of the screen where it says tennis courts and admission arrival. So when visitors come in the new south entrance, this is where they park. It's actually where they currently park. What we're really trying to do here is improve how it looks around where they're parking. We're adding a rain garden for both aesthetic and water quality. And we're proposing to add a deck around the, the Sugar Shack Building, which is the building you see in the bottom left on page 14. Would be proposing to add a deck on the, on the tennis court side of that. On page 15, this describes the scope for the reconstruction of Main Street. The main goal of reconstructing Main Street is to get the cars off of Main Street and eliminate the pedestrian vehicular conflicts that occur there too frequently. And the second aspect is to make this accessible, universally accessible. Basically from the library over to the dining hall. This work here would, would improve that. So would be removing some parking that is not really that and used, it's used by residents. Would be moving the resident parking and providing a safe pedestrian environment. On page 16, you can see a picture of what that might look like. Existing is on the top right and the proposed is on the bottom left. Would be improving the site lighting and again, really eliminating the, the parking and relocating parking to the actual faculty residences in lieu of, in the middle of the street. On page 17, right along the top of page 17, that is the Main Street work. The arts building is directly across the street. This is right next to the head of schools house, right in the core of campus. Our proposal is to remove a, a bunch of existing footprint, the old frick and the old alumni building. I say old in terms of their, their, some of them aren't even currently usable and that they're in need of, of updating. They are not salvageable in terms of the, the footprint use. So we're proposing a new structure in lieu of that, which you can see in the middle of the page, running up and down the page, that says admission building. So the, the goal here is to provide an admission and head of school office suite in the middle of campus with a view of the lake and a view of the fields right at the core of campus. And the head of schoolhouse would be returned to its single-family type residence house, which it was originally when the campus started in the 30s. On page 18, it, it shows a little bit of the details of the plans and it shows like where the offices are and where the waiting room is and the original house. And you can see that the goal would be to have a garage. So again, the cars come off of Main Street and are with the residential units. So this plan shows a bunch of details we can come back to if, if folks have questions. As far as the scale along Main Street on page 19, this shows the, the head of schoolhouse, the proposed admission building, which is a story and a half building. There's a faint outline next to that, which shows the arts building right along Main Street. And then the existing Thorn building next to that. So the proposed arts building is lower than the head of schoolhouse and very much in keeping with the arts building, which you can see on the bottom right picture. It's, it's the scale of the arts building that is along the street. So it does not go down an extra story, just a story and a half. In terms of how Main Street would feel, it, that view that you have in front of arts is the same. We're extending that same condition that was created with the arts project. The proposed building would be 32 feet tall at the peak. Page 20 shows the beginning of what the new, to give you a feel for what the new building would look like. You, you can see the existing top right and the proposed bottom left. It's a building very much in keeping with the feel of the campus, with the white clapboard and the trim and the metal roof. Page 21 shows what happens when we demo the build, the existing buildings and turn the building. So you get the view of the lake. So as you walk towards the admission building, you'll actually get a view to the fields and towards the lake. Page 22 goes and turns back and looks back towards Main Street. And you can see the, the waiting room structure on the left and the admission building kind of set a little bit behind that. The, again, the feel is slightly barn-like, but very in keeping with the rest of the Main Street structures. We are also creating a green space between these buildings to really bring the landscape into Main Street and have a very much softer feel. And again, that decrease in footprint I mentioned earlier. One way we're achieving the decreased footprint in this area is we're shifting the current event space, which is in the frick building, which is going away. We're proposing that that building go to the Wilder Dining Hall, which is an existing structure, which would require some minor renovations. I'm on slide 23, which kind of shows the, the original proposal has, isn't, is in the red and blue lines. And the blue lines show building additions we're no longer doing with COVID-19. And with the red lines, their walkways, we're no longer putting in. So we're really decreasing the, even the intended amount of impervious surface within the watershed. The Wilder Building, as you can see in the bottom left, the admission, the proposed admission building is in that little vignette in the bottom left. The admission building is on the right on the bottom. And the Wilder Building's on the left, which is at the four corners, if you're familiar with campus. Page 24 zooms in on the Wilder Building. So the, the goal here is, is to expand a, a room that's already a meeting room on campus to a size that can replace the frick building. So again, we're reusing footprint and keeping basically within a minor expansion. And then we're creating a proposed entry where students can, can enter and exit the building more cleanly, more in the center of the dining hall. Page 25 shows the floor plan and the expansion is really just the areas in blue. All the white footprint is existing building, existing roof line. That's just getting some minor renovation and the blue would be the, the actual addition to the building. The, the little picture there on page 25 is of the proposed vestibule, where students would be coming in and dropping their backpacks and moving in and out of the space. Page 26 shows what the building will look like, which is very similar to the existing with a little bump out for the vestibule and the existing peaked roof with the little gables on it currently exists. We're just bumping out a, a flat roof section around the side of it. So it looks very similar to what exists now. Page 27 just updates a little bit on the sequencing goals. Originally, when the project was proposed pre-COVID, it was a more of a phased approach into when things would be installed with how things have evolved with COVID and timing and, and getting before the board. We're seeing the project more consolidate around summer of 2021 with a little bit of work starting in the spring and a little bit of work completing up at, in the fall. But basically the project fitting within the 2021 calendar year, assuming the board is, ends up satisfied with the project. And then page 28 is just again, an aerial showing the highlighted areas of work. And just see, see if you have any questions. So that was sort of the fast version of, hopefully a fast version.
I will see if anybody has any questions or comments from the board at this point. Seeing none. Why don't we talk about, so I think the next step would be to set a site visits. Oh, let me ask Gene. Gene, is there any members of the public make any comments during, do they want to address during this hearing?
Give me one second. No.
Okay. So why don't we do that? I'd like to set a site visit. And I think noticing, so why don't we notice the site visit to a butter and notice the common driveway application? So you have to do that anyway. Just let people know, okay, we got this common driveway application. We've got these other applications, the ones that have already been done. And we got the site walk. That way everyone is released aware that, hey, there's some stuff going on here. We don't have a lot of the butter there. Why don't we do that? So what, what are people on campus, what are you thinking about a timeframe? And do you want everyone at once? Do you want separate?
Hi, this is Paul Griffin from Brooks. It, it really has to be sooner rather than later as we plan for the kids to come back and trying to create. Basically what we're trying to do is, we're only going to have boarding students on campus in the fall. That's our plan. So there's a very narrow window. Today is the 18th. If we can do it within the next week, preferably this week would be great. But if we could do it by, by early next week, that would be, that would be okay as well. But to, sorry to be, to truncate it like that, but under the circumstances, that's sort of the approach we have to take.
Okay.
Paul, has the, Paul, did the Conservation Commission schedule a site visit as well? Or you haven't been heard with them?
I, I think Anthony's been talking with them. Anthony, have you been able to set that up?
So we've done a site walk with Amy and our wetland scientists and went over a majority of the wetlands at one visit. And we just recently staked the center line of the south entrance yesterday and also restaked some wetland flags that were missing that were in the field. And so that's been done. And I believe Amy was going to try and get out there to review that wetland line as well. But, but as we haven't been before the Conservation Commission, a, a site walk couldn't be set up with the commission. So it's just been with, with Amy so far.
Okay.
So I know we're talking weekday, weekend, doesn't matter.
I will say from my seat, whatever works best for you, I can do whatever you need. But weekday is better for most, I would say.
Okay. Board members, anyone have a preference or days that can't do? Times? I'm pretty flexible.
Yeah, I could do a weekday evening if that works for everyone else. You know, Thursday evening, Friday evening.
So maybe, how about like a Thursday, six o'clock?
Yeah. And you know, it's just getting dark now. So I think if we did six o'clock, it would give us enough daylight. I, I mean, it's not going to last more than a half hour, 40 minutes, is it?
I don't think so. Kelly? Kelly?
Typically the evenings on a weekday would be fine, but the 20th, if you're looking for this week, but what, when are we looking?
Some, this week, 20th, 19th, 20th, 21st?
The 20th, I could do an eve, the evening of the 21st. I can't do the 20th. There's another committee meeting.
Okay. Friday the 21st.
Yeah. Atan, in order to provide 48-hour notice, I would prefer the 21st as well. It, it, there'll be no deliberation, but still, we typically post and maintain the 48-hour notice.
Sure. So then we're looking at Friday the 21st at six o'clock.
Anthony, is that okay on your end?
I'm, I'm fine.
I can, I can be there.
Okay.
Let's do that then. Where will people meet?
I think we probably meet, I think the driveway of 1116 might be the best place for us to go.
Okay. So that's the current house next door?
Yes.
Okay. And you guys own that currently, right?
Yes. Yes.
Driveway of 1116 Great Pond Road at six o'clock on Friday, August 21st.
And we could take you right across the, the, the walk and you can see where it's stationed.
I would recommend people wear bug spray. Just from one of the other meetings we did it, like a Thursday, Friday at six o'clock. Okay. Anything else we need to discuss on this before continuing it until our next meeting date? Okay. So Gene, when's our next meeting date?
September 1st.
Okay. Should we keep it on the agenda for September 1st?
Yes. I would expect that the stormwater review will at least go through one round at that time.
Okay. Okay. Let's do that. Then continue until, well, it continued, well, the site visit will be August 21st at six o'clock. The hearing is continued until September 1st. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Have a good day. Okay, all right, new public hearing, forty flagship drive, AKA zero flagship drive, DWT Holding LLC. Application for site plan of use special permit under Article eight, part three, and Article ten, one ninety-five, ten point seven, and the end of the zoning by law. The applicant proposes to construct a fifteen thousand one hundred square foot, single story metal building with associated parking, maintenance facilities, and stormwater management design. Primary use of the office to serve the applicant's construction company. The accessory use of indoor storage for equipment and vehicles, as well as an outdoor gravel lay down area. Also to serve construction company property, located in I ones and just. And I'm going to read my fun public hearing notice. pursuant to government bakers, March twelve, two thousand and twenty, order spending certain provisions of the meeting law. General law, chapter thirty, or section eighteen, and the government's March fifteen, two thousand and twenty, important order imposing strict limitations on the number of people in the gathering one place. This public hearing of the number of applying board is being conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the board or members of public will be permitted. As the public can listen to and view this meeting law in progress by accessing the end of the program or by watching on television. Members of public may comment or ask questions if they wish to do so by emailing our funding director, Gene Enright, and J E N R I G H T at the north end of it. Okay, great. Gene, when you tell us about this?
Sure, just a note on the Brooks application. There were no public comments received on that application as well. So this application proposes to construct a fifteen thousand one hundred square foot, single story metal building. The primary use of the building would be office with accessory use of storage of construction company equipment and vehicles. There is proposed outdoor lay down area. I will note that the building commissioner would like to get more information in terms of the definition of a lay down area, but it's proposed to be a gravel area outside of the accessory use. And it's to serve the construction company. I will note also that there's a significant change in grade from the front of the lot to the rear of the lot. The board may want a detailed review of the grading and drainage plan provided by the engineer tonight. This portion of flagship drive abuts a residential district. It abuts a subdivision, Marion Drive. And a locus has been included in your packet to show that relationship. Stormwater peer review has conducted the first review and provided comments to the applicant. The applicant has opted not to respond to those at this time and wait for the board's review, as well as other department review comments to incorporate in the next revision. The department review has been submitted by the Health Department, Conservation, DPW, Fire, Police, and the Building Commissioner. As I said, we got in the lay down. Fire has some pretty specific but routine comments that will need to be addressed. DPW as well has, again, pretty specific comments that we just sent to the applicant today. Conservation has noted that this is, as you know, an undeveloped lot. At one time back in the early nineties, there was actually some clearing done that resulted in a washout of this and sediment actually downstream into a wetland. So an enforcement order was put in place. The undeveloped lot has since, in order to address that enforcement order, had some sediment. I'm sorry, some detention basins constructed on the lot and that issue had been resolved. And so it's been undeveloped for quite some time. There is an elevation running from low to high, from the front of the lot to the rear of the lot. The lot abuts Watts Regulator. And again, as I said, it's undeveloped at this time. So I think the applicant can again, provide an overview, but I'd be interested in grading, cut fill, retaining wall information and stormwater management design.
Nice. So if we could hear from the applicant about those items, as well as I'm curious about the activity on site is going to be, is this an ongoing business, a new business? What kind of hours, what kind of equipment, those kind of things?
Okay, this is I'm Charlie Wareham with Meridian Associates. I have Bill Linsky is the applicant. I don't know, Bill, can you? Can you weigh in and let us know that you're there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, is Bill somewhat, well, I'll if 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 you would like, Mr. Chairman, I can I can walk through the the site plans and then what do you, would you prefer? Bill could better answer the the building inspector's question about the about the lay down area. It's essentially contractors yard is the is.
It may make sense to hear from Bill first about, tell us about the business. What's going to be going on there? How many employees? How many cars? Hour, all that kind of stuff. So we know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Business we're talking about before we get into the plans.
Okay, Bill, do you want to weigh in on tell them about your business and what you know, what your daily operations would be like? And as the chairman said, you know, how many employees you have and hours of operation, things like that.
I mean, most of our employees go directly to job sites. We're a heavy civil contractor. We do commercial site development and road construction, underground utilities and things like that. The yard would be for storage of equipment, you know, pipe barriers, buckets for machines, trucks, things of that nature that are kind of incidental to our operation. And also be repairing equipment in the garage and everything. And we have a couple of maintenance guys that will be there. Office staff is really kind of, you know, three or four guys right now, but we are growing. It's really it. I mean, you know, most of our activity would be, you know, pretty much loading up and leaving that place and just parking stuff there as it's either being run through service or you know, there for the night. Our operations mostly take place, you know, on project sites, like I said, or in roadways and things like that.
And what was the the outdoor gravel lay down area? That was a new term.
Yeah, well, the equipment's tracked. So if we put pavement up there, I mean, the the machines, when they're just brought back and parked in the yard, they'll they destroy it. So I mean, the gravel really makes sense for things like bulldozers to be parked on and excavators and things like that.
All right. So located, it's mostly a location for parking.
Parking, storage, or staging of material, things like that.
So Aton, can I just clarify? So the parking will be in addition to in the bays. I forget how many bays there are, approximately eight. They'll also be parking of equipment on the lay down area overnight?
Yes.
Okay, and the bays on the architectural plans that came in indicate a number of them would be have tenants in them as well as your construction company. So is the intent to also lease base space to other contractors?
Not necessarily contractors, but potentially, yes.
Gene, I guess I'm wondering if leasing of space, if that makes, is that a separate, different accessory use? And the difference between storage and rental space?
Yeah, it's space for the similar type use I would envision. So I mean, it could be an electrical contractor or plumbing contractor. But I can certainly confirm with the building inspector to make sure he's aware of that.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know that. It could maybe cost about something different. Okay. Any storage of hazardous materials or gas or propane or things like that?
No, I mean, there might be a fuel tank, but if it would be permitted or if it's a problem, we wouldn't do it. But nothing, nothing hazardous would be there.
Right. I don't think the hours of operation were specified. So do you have any idea what you're thinking the hours of operation would be?
Our projects pretty much start at seven in the morning. So I mean, the guys would be there to get a vehicle and leave. Prior to that, they'd get to the job site by seven. There really wouldn't be any activity there other than, you know, a vehicle leaving. After that, during the day, and once the mechanic shows up, I mean, they might be moving a machine into the garage and out of the garage. There's some activity loading a truck or something like that with material or a machine, but the most probably be just, you know, vehicles leaving the property to go to work in the morning and then coming back. I mean, they usually be back around at four thirty, something like that, five.
Do you know what the noise level of these types of machines would be in the morning? Construction equipment, would there be that the beeping backup noise in the morning in the neighborhood of residential area?
No, we'd stage them so they could just start and drive right out. We wouldn't have them backing up and going around banging tailgates, things like that. We'd be respectful of the neighbors.
So one of the conditions that we often put in is about idling, kind of following up on Kelly's point is, you know, if you started seven, fine, but sometimes in the winter, that means you're starting your trucks at like six thirty, sixteen to warm them up. It starts getting a little bit early. So we'll just have to look at that. Again, it sounds like you're cognizant of that. So that's the most important part, you know, whether it's.
No, I'd want to be a good neighbor. I mean, you have to get out of there before seven to just to make it in time to the job sites. But I mean, you know, I wouldn't be running equipment around the property before seven and things like that. It's like I said, I understand that it's residential in the back and I'm looking to be a good neighbor, not not a nuisance.
Gene, could you look at one of the contracted yards we permitted on? I think it's on Osgood down near sixteen hundred. I know we had some neighbors that talked about lighting and noise and we put some conditions in.
Yep.
I know, I don't remember the exact address, but I remember.
Sixteen seventy-nine Osgood Street, he'll actually likely be on your next agenda for his bond release, but I will revisit that. And I've also talked to the Health Department today and asked for some standard language in terms of noise ordinances. DEP has an ordinance, so I would envision conditioning that as well. And again, I'd be interested in the elevation of this building and this equipment in relation to the house directly behind it on Marion Drive. Is it the same level? Is it lower? Is it higher? And and how that would impact the screening that's proposed at the end? So I.
Yeah, maybe Charlie, you could talk about that. Also, lighting would be interesting, just to make sure lights aren't shining in people's backyards.
Would you like me just to jump, jump right into that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm I'm looking at my maybe helpful to look at. I always like to look at plans. In our folder, the very first PDFs of the the plan set application.
What are we looking at, application materials?
Yeah, application materials, if let me go back.
Within that file, Aton, it'll start twenty twenty dash seven dash sixteen, Plan Set Application.
Yeah, and then the application materials, right? And then the twenty twenty seven sixteen Plan Set Application.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at that one.
If you scroll down, the grading plan is sheet number six. I know this is a little bit difficult to see, but to answer specifically, to to answer the question about the grade, the 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 grade of the the grade of the yard, of the of the contractors yard, it's up around, it's probably a similar elevation to to what the houses are on the, I mean, we're cutting. You have to see on the on the top of the page is about an eight foot cut at the top of the page. And then directly behind that is is some rip rap to to bring the site back to 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 grade. And then at the at the bottom of the grade, there's about a five foot fill there. And then it would it would grade off. So the overall, the yard being, you know, relatively flat is probably, you know, it's probably a similar elevation to the to the houses that are we are maintaining, which is required by the zoning, but we are maintaining a fifty foot vegetated buffer along that back as well. The the lighting is actually shown on is actually is shown on that sheet as well. We're limiting the lighting to some wall packs. You'll see this this one at the very on the side that faces the residences, there's a wall pack there. And then the side that faces to the to the west has two wall packs in there. And that's just to light up the areas that are directly in front of the building into, you know, to provide some light when vehicles are going in and out of the the overhead doors that are there. We've provided in our application package, we've provided the details for that lighting and the and the photometrics for those lighting there. It's their spotlighting, their full cutoff fixtures in there. When I say spotlighting, I mean, it's it's directed down to the to in limited, the light is limited to the area directly in the area of the light. So there's no spillage of light on to the, you know, to the neighbors' properties. There's two additional, there's two light poles that are that are proposed on the access driveway that comes in. That's to the the northwest alley of the site. I believe they're twelve foot high aluminum poles, again, full cutoff fixtures. That light is again, directed on to the roadway. So there'll be, in fact, I don't think those poles, because there's a it's a ten percent slope on the on the driveway there. I don't believe those light poles will even be seen even up on the site, those are pretty far away from the residences.
Gene, any any kind of additional comments, questions based on that?
I I had. Yeah, just a couple general comments, and it's probably more for context right now than anything else. And basically, the thing that I'm concerned about is that this whole area goes back probably almost to the time when I first joined the planning board about the contention between flagship drive and and Marion Drive. It was probably, you know, a huge, huge set of issues that existed way back in time. So I'm particularly concerned about the relationship between the this property and the houses on the street. And I guess the one thing that I didn't see in the package was sort of I can't tell how close this property is to the nearest house, both in terms of is does it butt residential directly? Is there another property in between? How many feet is it from the closest house, those sorts of things? Because in the past, there were really big problems that existed between some of the commercial use and and the houses of Marion Drive.
Okay, the Gene was so good to provide, if we if you go back to if you go back to the see if I can find to the starting page on this file. Click back to Gene was so good to provide actually a locus PDF. And that does. I mean, this, we do directly.
Yeah, I'm just not seeing it.
Yeah.
Here, a very small one, okay.
Right under where it says one point oh two acres, the house is right there. And then obviously, it shows our lot. So we do directly about, you know, a couple of houses there.
But the dimension on the rare lot line is a hundred feet in, right? With the tree line is shown on the plan.
It's a it's a hundred feet to the building. It's a there's a fifty foot tree tree line, which is being respected. I don't know the exact dimension to the house itself.
I don't see a fence on the plan. Are you proposing a fence to also help with noise control?
We have not yet shown that, but it was it's something that that I I can discuss with the owner.
And do you know if there's any existing fencing?
There's not.
Oh, yeah, and you have buttered properties as well.
There may be, I don't know if there's a fence on the on the residential part property or not. I would have to check that.
I mean, I gotta tell you, just the members of the board, this feels a lot to me like we need to do a process similar to what we did with the KSC project, because this is really close. I I may be wrong with this comment, but I think when we looked at this back thirty odd years ago, the thinking was that this lot that's here was never going to be developed so that people didn't have to worry very much. This looks like you're going to have a building within two hundred and fifty feet of of people's houses. So we we really need to to come to a firm understanding of what's going on here to protect, you know, preserve a certain balance between the the residents and the the new project.
So John, can I ask you about that? So and Jean may do, I mean, it's an industrial district, that's that, I mean, that's the difficulty, right? Is that it's an industrial district, so this use lines up with an industrial district, right? And so how do we kind of merge those two things of having an industrial district next to a residential district and what we can and. And how we mitigate those things?
Yeah, I I mean, I think we're gonna go out of our way in this case and and Gene, you may want to go back way back in time. To see if you could pick up anything from files, because it was a huge set of problems and and issues that existed. You know, back then.
Do you know if it was associated with a certain project, John, or?
I think the the place that created the problems at the time was is one of the. The like Kemlon or one of the lawn type services that a lot of trucks running in and out. And I don't think they're there now anymore. But the whole idea was when you looked at it and you saw the impact in the neighborhood, I think people felt the lot next door was was not buildable. So we we have some buffering protection and if if this is indeed the lot next door, and again, I'm not asserting for sure that it is. But that, you know, again, is it it creates less of a buffer.
Yeah, i- if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, from the, I'm looking at the aerial right now and. I'm I'm not sure why anyone would have thought that this lot was not developable. In fact, in the nineties, there was development that was started on this, so I'm not sure why it stopped. But if you look at the at the at the abutting properties on either side of us, they're they butt up to this. To this residential neighborhood in the same manner that that we're proposing, so I. You know, and I'm not downplaying that we should be, that we that we would take the, you know, the residential neighborhood. Seriously and try to minimize the impacts to them, but. But I I see this is is we're in an industrial district and we we just want to use the property in a similar manner that. That others in the industrial park have used and.
Are you gonna be closer to the the nearest house than the other building in the in the industrial park?
It it does not look that way. It looks like that they, for example, the 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 building which is directly next to us. I think we're about the same distance.
Okay, it just might be useful to flesh that out a little bit more and give us some idea of. How far you are, the building from the property line, how far the the paved areas from the property line.
Sure.
All the screening, you know, lighting in the back, all all those sorts of things. I mean, again.
Yeah.
It it, you know, I I I I get it, you want to be good neighbors and I think you you've said that, I appreciate that and. But if we get it right in the beginning, then we'll never have a problem down the road and believe me, you'll you'll be better off too.
Yep.
Yeah, Charlie, the more we can. Invest upfront in potential screening, whether it's trees, fences, things like that. And not have an impact on the applicant's business, the. Easier it is for the board to say yes.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, Gene, so what do we have outstanding for kind of our next steps?
Well, we have a significant amount of comments back from our peer reviewer at Stormwater, given quantity, but I think quality wise. I think they all are some multiple and can be addressed. The DPW and FIRE have both submitted comments that require responses as well. In some plan updates and so the the applicant, I think wisely so, has waited to receive all of those before they start making plan adjustments again. I will note that I have not been informed of any abutter comments, so notice did go out to Marion Drive. I mean, no one has contacted me at this time, but I will certainly incorporate those in the next hearing if I do receive any.
Okay, yeah, please let us know.
No emails have come in tonight for the project.
Okay, so why don't we continue the hearing, we can put, we can do this September first date, or if you guys need more time, we can do the next. The September fifteenth, whatever the applicant prefers. We can hopefully get those responses to comments and then you can share some more details on kind of our concerns about. The distances and the screening and things like that.
Yeah, the the we actually have, the the peer review was was very timely. We we actually got that about, I think it was a week, week and a half ago and so we jumped right on on that. There were no significant issues, it was mostly. You they're mostly, you know, additional, looking for additional information and. You know, some minor adjustments to some of the drainage and and, you know, assurances, they were, you know, it was important, I think, I think part of the the peer review. That was important to them was was which Gene alluded to was because this site has a history of having. You know, some bad erosion problems that caused, you know, when one of the things that. And that's what the peer review was was aimed at as well, looking for more specificity about how we were handling the site. And and to that end, what I'd like to point out, and you can kind of see it on the plans if you if you review them, is there are some. That's not me, that's, I don't know where that's coming from. That that there are some small sediment basins at the front of the site and we're proposing a a large wet basin. You know, a much larger wet basin in the front of the site, now to be the first thing to be constructed and that will be a permanent basin. And it'll act both as a, you know, a stilling basin for the for the construction period as well as a. As well as the permanent, you know, stormwater management structure that will be on the site. But I I've just figured I would throw that in there as part, but the the point being about the about our. About the peer review is that we've actually addressed probably ninety five percent of it. It's 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 almost ready to go and we probably can get it filed back with this board and also address the comments from from department heads. There was, there were no significant comments from them and we could probably have plans back to this planning board next week.
Okay, so why don't we put it on for September first, if for some reason it it doesn't, you don't have enough information, you need more time, we can do that. Otherwise, we'll go continue on September first.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, Bill, thank you, Charlie.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank all of you for your time as well.
All right, continued until September first. Discussion items, Lake Tiduric Water Quality Testing.
Okay, so I can provide an update to that. So since the last meeting, Aton, Peter, myself, Jim Stanford, John Bojazzy. And the town manager, Melissa Rodriguez, discussed the board's request for data related to the raw lake water testing. At that meeting, the takeaway was it was agreed that the DPW will hire an intern from Amermac College to data enter some existing data. And to put that data into a meaningful presentation format, so the the result was really is just a manpower issue. The water treatment plant does have this information, however, it's just not in a meaningful format right now. It needs to be data entered. And presented in a way that we could interpret the results. So they have worked with HR, I don't think the job's been posted yet, but I know a job description has been submitted and it should be posted within a couple days. In addition, I have finalized, I I described a watershed update to the nineteen eighty seven plan. It was budgeted at town meeting, approved for funding, and so I have finalized the scope of that. Peter has actually reviewed it and provided important input. I've also reviewed it with DPW, the water treatment staff. And director of DPW for their input. Yesterday, I mailed that out to four engineering consulting companies. Those companies are Ty and Bond, who's worked previously on our stormwater MS four permit. Coorsley Witten, which which is our peer review consultant for Stormwater. Weston and Sampson and Wooded and Curran, who have both provided peer review for DPW for projects like Princeton Property and. Amazon, so I've given them a date for return by September eighth, where we can review the quotes. And move forward with starting that update. Hopefully, the intern will be on board and have data entered a lot of that raw data information into meaningful format. For the consultants to review as well.
Thanks for moving ahead on all of that, Gene and Aton, good stuff.
All right, it's nice to to finally get some progress on that, so thank you everyone. All right, planning board filing fees.
Okay, so this again is a follow up to the last meeting. You had asked for more information in terms of how many waivers we have issued for the last couple of years. For special permits, watershed as well as site plan review and insubstantial change requests. And so in the staff report, I've detailed two thousand nineteen, the sum of waivers for watershed site plan and insubstantial change is eight. And year to date, two thousand twenty, the sum is seven. And so the question was, do we want to add to the filing fee a. A fee for a waiver request. Currently, we have a fee for a special permit modification and an extension, however, waiver request. Or insubstantial change was not accounted for. Again, my recommendation on waiver request was. If you were to include one, a two hundred dollar base fee, similar to the extension and modification. And for insubstantial change, a one hundred dollar base fee would would be my recommendation and again, I'm not. If you want to account for them, it's just something that we do today that has no associated fee. In addition, there was a repetitive petition, which I believe there's only been one in the ten years I've been here and that does not have a fee associated either. And lastly, one more permit occurred to me last week and that's the land disturbance permit. And so I've added that to the draft as well and I've kept that similar to what a site plan review would would consist of, which is four hundred dollars. And that's the site plan review, not including any type of growth floor area. The the land disturbance permit is actually a permit that only exists if no other overview is required. And so that means it doesn't come before you for a site plan, for a watershed, for any other permit. It doesn't trigger conservation review and disturbances over an acre of land and so they're pretty infrequent. The bylaw itself is the erosion control bylaw and it actually specifies in the bylaw that the planning board will establish fees. And those fees will be added to the schedule of filing fees and that bylaw was adapted in two thousand eleven. So we've been charging and the, again, the few times we've had a land disturbance, three hundred dollars, but my recommendation would be four hundred. Because I think it's really consistent with the site plan review permit.
So Gene, we need to vote on adopting the proposed planning board filing fees. And assuming the fees you've laid out are good, decide whether or not to add a fee for waiver. Insubstantial change and or repetitive petition, right?
Correct, and the land disturbance permit to add that and to adopt anything's. I have put strike through for anything to be deleted, in italics for anything to be added. And again, the additions are not necessarily adding fees, they're just calling out special permits that weren't accounted for.
Okay, so I think, I mean, I, we can all kind of give our opinions on this, I'm. Fine with the italics and the the strike throughs and the additions. The land disturbance fee permit at four hundred dollars makes sense to me. I would not be in favor of a waiver fee or an insubstantial change fee. To me, that those are people saying that you shouldn't rise to the level of requiring planning board action, basically, so I don't really want to charge you for that. I guess I can go away on the repetitive petition, so that's that's my two cents now here from everybody else.
That accounts for a repetitive petition as well, Aton?
Yeah, I don't care about the repetitive petition one, I mean, that one, it would make sense to charge because it's already come back to us once, but. It's so infrequent that I'm not sure it really matters.
So I would advocate for at least listing them as zero fees, just to take.
Right, yeah.
Just to clarify it for anybody in the future that is trying to administer the fee schedule.
Okay, so that would be my take, but I'm, I don't have strong opinions if everyone, if other people have other opinions, I'm certainly willing to go along with what the majority wants. Other people have strong opinions, so why don't we just go in order, John, any particular opinions?
Okay, I I I don't think we should, I think you're right on repetitive petitions, I also, I I think we should waive the waivers, so to speak. Because otherwise, people will just avoid the system and I don't think it really costs us much out of pocket.
Okay, there, Peter? Okay, Kate?
I agree with everything you said.
Can you tell my wife that?
Just in this context.
Kelly?
Nothing additional.
All right, so can we get a motion, motion to approve the fee schedule? As proposed in the packet with the amendments of a, including all the strike throughs. And additions, deletions, the four hundred dollar land disturbance permit fee. And permit fees of zero dollars for repetitive petitions, watershed special permit waiver requests. And.
In substantial change?
In substantial change.
And the waiver request would apply to any waiver, so cyclin review, watershed or any others, so.
All waiver request zero and insubstantial change zero.
This this then would be forwarded to the board of selectmen because they actually approve fees and so now that we're adding one, it would have to go by their review as well.
Okay, we got a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call vote, John?
Yes.
John, I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Right, approved, thank you for that hard work on putting that all together, Gene.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty first?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, John?
John votes yes.
Aton, I vote yes.
Yes, Peter.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
Um, yep, I have one comment, so I was informed this past week that it appears the sixteen hundred redevelopment project. Will be coming before you for a modification. They've received from some feedback from Mass DOT, which affects the internal circulation. Essentially, the two interior drives will likely be connected to the exterior drives internally. And there could be some restrictions on those interior drives for right turn in, right turn out, that the applicants are still working with Mass DOT, but. It appears that they will have to file a modification and they're trying to get on your agenda for September fifteenth. And are hoping for potentially, if if this can all get buttoned up, I may be able to draft a decision for that night too. Okay, it will, it will require traffic, I'm gonna, I informed them, I want traffic peer review and stormwater peer review again, just to check all the boxes.
But it's just for the internal, right?
Well, the internal would connect to the the outside ones, which which changes, you know, requires a stop sign at one and a stop bar. And then the queuing, so the queuing will be a little bit different, they they think they've more than accounted for it and I think they likely have. But I just, the the original peer review actually hinted that that may be required and. So they felt that the internal modification may be required and I think we're going in that direction.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Gene.
Yeah.
Okay, another good job on this hearing, everybody, and this meeting, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was quick, okay, roll call, John?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Kelly, want to vote?
Yes.
All right, I think that is yes to both, okay, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.